Jen has the.
The list, she'll bring them in?
Okay.
One second, please.
Sure. This takes a little bit of time, this moving in and out is not instantaneous, so we apologize for the delays in doing this.
The list too. Is it in any particular order?
They're all gonna come in as presenters at the same time, they all have parts of this presentation.
They are currently being promoted at this time.
Thanks for promoting me, guys, I think I'm all the only ones so far, but I'll wait in for the rest of my colleagues to come in.
Excuse me, I just wanna make sure you could see the presentation.
Yeah, I can see it, can you all hear me, just wanna do a quick mic check?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, guys.
Can we do a mic check for each one of us, just to make sure that we can be heard?
We heard you.
Okay, great.
Hi, everyone.
They hear ya.
Hi, everyone, my name is Tasia, can you hear me?
Yes, Tasia, can you move your screen so we can actually see your face, you're cut off the way your thing is?
Oh, yeah, I gotta, the shade is kinda blocking me, I gotta fix this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm about to fix it though.
It's still cutting off your head, we wanna see you.
You got you, how's this?
That's better, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you for having us.
Are you guys ready?
So, everyone, Maya, Omna.
Tasia gotta get his video back up again, we have to have all videos on.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that, I was just trying to fix the thing that was blocking the light in my face, that's why I turned the video over.
It's still in your face, we're hard to see your beautiful face.
But we can proceed.
Yeah, you can just proceed, I'm gonna fix it.
Thank you. Um, so hello all, thank you for having us here tonight, I wanna thank obviously the distinguished Board of Education, especially Ms. Carbone, for allowing us the time to speak to the Yorktown Central School District community through this platform, and of course, to thank you to our Zoom members, I see there's 93 people on the call tuning in virtually, which is incredible, so we really appreciate everyone's dedication to our schools, um, you know, for taking the time to join tonight, and I hope it's not too much longer, we're able to hear some good news from Governor Cuomo about being able to gather in person again soon. So, before I begin, please allow me to introduce myself, I'm Fatima Chaudry, I've been in the Yorktown Central School District system for my whole life, K to 12 education, started as a little bitty kindergartner all the way through the 12th grade, graduating with the class of 2015, last year I completed my bachelor's from NYU with degrees in economics, math, and web programming, and have since been working in New York City as a business intelligence analyst in the advertising industry. Tonight, I'm here with a group of my colleagues, some of whom you'll speak to, and many of whom are tuned into this video conference, we're called the Yorktown for Racial Justice Alumni and Students Coalition, we'll be speaking to you about bringing an anti-racism education to Yorktown. So, if the presenter could please switch to the next slide. Thank you. So, we, the Yorktown for Racial Justice Alumni and Students Coalition, are a group composed of current students and alumni of the Yorktown Central School District, who are dedicated to bringing anti-racism to our schools. We came together after the tragic murder of George Floyd in late May to discuss how we could spread awareness of racial injustice and racial equity to our home in Yorktown, so our group spans over a decade of experience within the Yorktown school system, starting with 2012 alums all the way down to the most recent freshman class, who are set to graduate in 2023. Some of us live locally, others throughout the country, and few even across continents, all studying, working, and pursuing passions across a variety of different paths, and our common thread here is understanding that through our experiences and the experiences of our peers, that there's much work to be done in Yorktown regarding anti-racism and racial equity. Working through days and even the wee hours of the night, especially for many of our international members, all while managing school, jobs, and other responsibilities, it was after much discussion, research, and collaboration that our coalition wrote an open letter to Superintendent Hatter, Assistant Superintendent O'Shea, and the Yorktown Central School District Administration. We published this letter online publicly in the form of a petition, and since its publication around a month ago, we've gathered the support of over 5.5,000 community members. Today, we're speaking on behalf of the students, alumni, parents, teachers, community, and even council members who signed in support of our anti-racism initiative. Next slide, please. So you might be wondering why we're doing this, and I think every one of us has our own passion and drive behind why an initiative like this is so important, and especially pertinent for Yorktown. Conversations about race and racial injustice are best introduced at a young age to foster empathy, and we applaud the strides that the district has made in confronting sensitive issues in recent years, such as the creation of the Husker Discovery Program, the increased emphasis on teaching empathy and kindness to students through the East Team Curriculum, and collaborating with the Alliance for Safe Kids Organization in so many of our Yorktown events, but as students enter adulthood, we need to equip them with the resources and education needed to critically engage in ongoing conversations in our communities, and that will allow them, by doing this, we empower them to enact positive change within their communities and become empathetic leaders of society. This is why our group and all of our supporters, the 5.5,000 of them, believe that the Yorktown Central School District must devote more time and resources specifically and directly address contemporary racial justice issues. So for me personally, a Pakistani Muslim American who spent my entire primary and secondary education as a minority in Yorktown, I've witnessed and experienced both overt and covert racism and prejudice towards myself, my family, towards other people of color and minorities, and it wasn't until college for myself and many other Yorktown students where we began to learn about incredibly important historical and even more current events that affected and continue to affect so many minorities, and not even knowing how much there was regarding race and racial issues that I was never exposed to in my Yorktown education, I felt incredibly inadequately prepared to have taken part in any of these kinds of discussions as I grew older. And so speaking to the coalition and surveying tons of our community members in Yorktown, we started to understand that this was the sentiment all around. Next slide, please. So now I'd sort of like to switch gears a little to explain how we came to understand this widespread agreement that Yorktown needs to do better. Our group has spent close to the last two months reaching out far and wide to the Yorktown community, still living locally or long moved away, to collect their experiences and stories to help this community on Zoom and, you know, the wider community whoever watches this later on, to sort of understand just an iota of the real magnitude of this problem in our town. So these stories are real, they're raw, and they speak volumes to how pertinent anti-racism education is to our district, so we ask that you please listen with your hearts, as the stories that you hear later on are incredibly personal to our community members. So if you allow me, I'll start with my own. So as of one probably of two, two to three Muslim South Asian families in the Yorktown community, racism has managed to either blatantly present itself or disguise itself and slip into my family's lives in so many ways that recounting the overt and covert prejudice that my family's experienced within Yorktown schools could actually fill novels. And Islamophobia and Orientalism are rampant within the curriculum, right? Textbooks chosen by the district portray any non-white regions as societies in such a contemptuous manner, and they paint our history with this dangerous, inaccurate whitewashed narrative of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So this coupled with our teachers' implicit bias and majority of students' lack of education, which they're coming to Yorktown's schools to fix, is honestly a recipe for disaster. So let me give you some examples here. Imagine, as a Muslim student in the third grade, you're so excited to keep your fast for Ramadan at school for the first time ever, you've been fasting at home for around a year or two, already you're ready, your parents let you go to school and keep your fast. So you try and explain as best you can, again because you're eight years old and in the third grade, that you're fasting for your religion, but the lunch aid doesn't seem to understand, she doesn't know what Ramadan is, and instead forces you to eat, so you feel so pressured, right, you're eight years old in the third grade, you start to cry, and the school actually calls home to check that you're being fed properly. Imagine now, as a Muslim student, you're sitting in your Global Nine Soul Studies class during the Islam unit, your teacher is teaching the class a mnemonic device to differentiate between the two sects of the religion, and says Sunni sounds like sunny, the happy majority, and then draws a smiley face on the board. Shiite, S-H-I apostrophe I-T-E, sounds like something else, the crappy minority, and then references a poop emoji. Imagine now, as a South Asian student, you're learning about the British occupation of India in the imperialism unit in your soul studies class. You later have to write a DBQ about the benefits of mercantilism and profitable trading, when really you know this time period was of a genocide about where your ancestors were abused and killed. Tell me what the benefits of that were. These are all true stories within my own family's experience, and all this so far is disregarding the everyday microaggressions that became so normalized that it's almost hard for us to look back and recount them now, but here are a few more. The toxic political culture that cultivated following the 9/11 attack caused so many unaffiliated Muslim nations and the religion of Islam in general to become scapegoated. So as a result, innocent individuals in my family, in my community, were subject to xenophobic remarks and jokes being compared to violent terrorists within Yorktown system. Comments like "your food smells", it's a comment like this one that leads so many South Asians to become embarrassed by their race and ethnic origins, and this is a form of racial trauma. Instantly, you become an outsider in the cafeteria because my mom decided to pack me butter chicken for lunch, and comments like these are now coming, they came from the same people who now post on Instagram their authentic Indian non-bread and butter chicken from Jewel of Himalaya in town. It's comments like, "Oh, you kind of have an accent, where is it from?", because of the color of my skin? When actually I've spent my entire life in Yorktown, I speak English as fluently as the next person. These are just small snippets into our everyday experiences as a South Asian, a South Asian Muslim family living in Yorktown, attending Yorktown schools. It's time to shift away from teaching this whitewashed narrative that allows this kind of racism and microaggressions to perpetuate. In this town, we have an education curriculum, an entire educational curriculum that was created and designed by predominantly one demographic, that's being taught and implemented by the same predominant one demographic, but being imposed onto a population, including students of all demographics. Yorktown needs to do better. So thank you for listening to me, I'd like now to pass the mic over to the rest of my colleagues who are gonna spend some time sharing with you the community stories we've collected through our surveys and talk you through the specifics of the points we made within our petition. So next, I'm gonna hand the stage off to Sarah Shapiro, Sarah, please take it away.
Thank you, so first of all, I just wanna thank the Board for having us. Um, I graduated in 2019, and I'm now attending the University of Vermont. So what I'm gonna share with you first is my own community story, which happened during my senior year. So my time at Yorktown High School holistically was an incredibly enjoyable one. I made friends and memories which I carry with me through my entire life and I'll always cherish. I made high honor roll consistently, I was a New York scholar athlete for my winter track and for soccer, I loved both of those things very much. Unfortunately, not all of my time spent at Yorktown was as happy as some of the memories I choose to remember. Like so many of my peers, I was discriminated against in the place in which I was supposed to feel most safe. Students making racist or anti-Semitic comments was something many, including myself, had been prepared for by loved ones or family members. What I was not expecting, however, was further discrimination to come from a teacher. I was in a small class with several other students when a conversation ensued about two YouTubers who had both been punished by their communities for posting offensive content. One had posted anti-Semitic slurs, however, and had punished more severely. When one of the students asked my teacher why that was, he simply replied that it was because Jews own the media. Being a young Jewish woman, I immediately felt alienated and afraid, and quickly picked up my phone and took a walk, hoping when I returned I wouldn't hear the same hurtful conversation being led by my educator. Unfortunately, that was not the case. When I returned to the classroom, the teacher chuckled at the sight of me and asked condescendingly, "What, did I upset you?" He continued the anti-Semitic tirade of abuse by explaining to me that Jews own banks and the media, and therefore they are the ones in power, and that is simply a fact, that they had taken over everything. What may have hurt the most from this encounter was not the fact that my educator was spewing hate, but that he was teaching it to other students in the room. After I left and reported the incident to the principal, more than one of the students who were in the room that day asked why I was so sensitive, and even where my parents worked, insinuating they wondered if they worked in media or owned it perhaps. Now I was being harassed by students who would otherwise not have held this opinion if an educator did not teach it to them. After reporting, I was promised this would be taken seriously and that there was no tolerance for this kind of behavior. As I left school that day, the same teacher found me in the hallway and taunted me, saying, "Aw, are you still upset? You're all so sensitive." Feeling victimized and ashamed, I did not talk to my friends who were in that class for weeks, afraid to hear the same hurtful comments again. I did not receive any information about the incident, how the incident was being handled for six weeks, until my father wrote a letter to the administration. The end result was that through a thorough investigation, the incident did not qualify as harassment or discrimination. How this incident, which was a targeted attack against me because of my beliefs, did not fall under discrimination is beyond my understanding. The Board came to the conclusion that no Board policy was violated, and the principal told me to just avoid him, my own teacher. The fact that this teacher is still teaching and spewing hate still makes me feel physically ill to this day. He made the rest of my high school experience, which was otherwise incredibly happy, feeling safe, something no student should feel in their learning environment. So this next learning community story will be from a 2012 alum. As a non-Black person of color growing up in Yorktown, I've witnessed and experienced racism, whether it was towards me or towards other people of color communities. As a minority child who just wanted to fit in, I just accepted it and never really said or did anything. I now look back and regret my inaction. I believe if there was more education and better curriculum about races, and if we discussed more about sensitive topics like racism, I would have had a much better experience in Yorktown. Change is long overdue and absolutely necessary. This is now from a 2014 alum. I saw so much racism at Yorktown High School, so many people saying the N-word, who are white, making racist comments against all students of color. This is now a 2016 one. Looking back on my education, I feel like we didn't really cover a lot of Black history or talk about extremely important issues related to race and current events in history that deeply affect the lives of students. Also, the vast majority of my teachers were white. I've come to understand that this can be detrimental to the ability of minority students to see themselves as potential future leaders and teachers, and limits the viewpoints that get brought into education perpetuates a very subtle, but extremely dangerous racism. This is from a current student. While I am grateful to not have been called any racial scholars, the culture that exists in Yorktown schools does not foster cultural expression outside the classroom. While explicit racism is not very prevalent in what Yorktown School District, at least from my experience, racial and colorist microaggressions are rampant. Since I've lived in Yorktown for my entire life and have attended Yorktown School District since kindergarten, most of the racial assumptions I have experienced occurred earlier on. When I was younger, I got a lot of comments asking, "Where are you from?", from and assumptions that since I am Asian, I must have strict parents, no freedom, and be good at STEM courses. Now passive racism and stereotyping come with other non-Asian classmates asking me for help with math and science homework regardless of if I have offered, making assumptions about my actions and my parents' actions, and childishly imitating and mocking overly stereotyped South Asian mannerisms and accents. While at first glance they might not seem as damaging, it reinforces the idea that majority white population in Yorktown, that microaggressions are okay, and it reinforces the idea to people of color that they will not truly fit into Yorktown society. I'm a rising senior at Yorktown High School, might catch some flak from my peers for saying this, but it had to be said. There is no reason that students should be making a mockery of my culture or the cultures of others just for the sake of cheap comedy. This is a 2020 alum. The administration and teachers stand by as white students use the N-word in the hallways. There's no accountability for this behavior, and they simply turn a blind eye. Yorktown High School is clearly not a diverse place as both the student body and the staff, it's upsetting. It shows students a false view of the world, so many kids will leave high school shocked to see different kinds of people and all the different kinds of people they will meet. This is again from a current student. As I have noticed these past few years, teachers simply do not do enough to combat racism. It's not simply racism, but transphobia as well as homophobia and other hate speech. Teachers ignore students who use harmful language because they are so afraid to say anything, yet other students who they are supposed to protect feel that they cannot be themselves without being hated on or chastised in a place where they should feel safe. Teachers and staff should do more to combat hate. This is from a parent. Crompton Elementary School's War Reenactment Day really needs to be rethought, it's so inappropriate. Some students have need of lineage, how do you think they feel? They either have to dress up as their oppressor and carry a musket used to kill their people, or a Native American, and see all the weaponry on display and experience what their ancestors must have felt like, not very empathetic. This is from a recent alumni parent. As a parent who has had children in the Yorktown School District from 2007 to 2020, I have noticed a pattern of absence and acknowledgement of people of color, it is a sort of invisibility. While there are no two or three specific instances of terrible communication, there is also an overall cluelessness about inclusive processes. I speak from experience as a parent volunteer and with some engagements with the administration. While I've explained away each of these instances as poor people skills, I do think it's worth bringing up in the context of these changes that you were trying to make happen. As examples, a group email about a meeting was sent to all class parent volunteers except the one brown parent. An administrator completely ignored the one parent while acknowledging another parent and child at length, even though they were both there for the same exact reason. So I'd like to thank you again for having me, and I'm going to pass and continue the community stories to Lizzie, who will share their own story and continue to share the survey stories.
Thank you, Sarah, can everybody hear me? Okay, I think that's a yes, alright, so thank you again Board for having us. My name is Lizzie, and my pronouns are they and them. I graduated from Yorktown in 2013 as a West Coast finalist who went on to international competition. I sweep through the Yorktown Science Research classes. I then went on to graduate from the University of Pittsburgh in 2017, and now I am an environmental engineer in training. I'm currently the Facilities Project Coordinator at Pitt's Conservatory and Botanical Gardens down here in Pittsburgh. Um, and also we're having Pittsburgh weather right now, so that means that within the past five minutes we're now having thunder, so if you hear that in the background, I apologize. I'm also a member of the LGBT community, and I find that it's very important for minorities to support and uplift each other, and that's why this is so close to home for me. As others have said, I have a lot of good memories in Yorktown, but I also have a lot of negative ones. So this is my personal story. I found that Senate class was by far the worst, the teachers always gave us a prompt and then split us up by political party, and then they let us duke it out, and it always, always ended up with the less privileged students practically begging for the white affluent kids to hear their story and have some empathy. The one story that sticks out to me the most was a Latin student who came from a lower-class family and was first generation from Central America. He spent five minutes talking about his experiences and life growing up with two hardworking parents who struggled to make ends meet, and the only way he could go to college without incurring huge amounts of debt was to get a scholarship and get in with the assistance of affirmative action. He put his heart on his sleeve only to have another kid from a rich white family tell him he didn't deserve it because he was taking my spot, and then talked down to him for a couple minutes later. The teachers had never stepped in to stop that. Instead, anyone who wasn't straight, white, and upper-class got beat down the entire semester trying to explain why people should care about them as a person. There were also two girls in my grade who were probably the nicest people, but no one ever interacted with them because they were ghetto and trashy, simply because of how they spoke, their clothes, and the color of their skin. Never mind that half of the class was using the N-word in the hallway trying to speak ghetto, I still don't know what that means, and then a bunch of white rich kids shouting the N-word in the hallway, how welcoming must that feel to students of color? Students from other cultures constantly had their food, their clothes, and culture made fun of by students and even teachers. We had to listen to stories about British and American colonial rule, the Holocaust, and multiple genocides around the world, and hear other students mock the death of innocent people with no intervention from teachers. In health class, there was no education on the AIDS crisis and how it disproportionately kills Black and gay people. There was nothing, just don't get AIDS, that was all that we had. And I cannot speak for the experiences of students of color, but I can talk about what it was like growing up being queer and non-binary, the feeling of being othered constantly and hiding yourself and trying to blend in to escape the abuse of your fellow students, is not surprising at all to me that students graduate, they leave the town, and then they never come back. The amount of people that I still talk to who actively disdain the school and administration of our time for not protecting them and teaching them speaks volumes. The next one that I will say, the next story that I will speak to is from a current Yorktown student. I saw this petition was being spread around across all social media, so I decided to share it with a group of fellow students in my grade. This group is composed of students taking advanced and AP courses. These are all students who will graduate from Yorktown to attend top-tier schools and grow up to become successful professionals. And these are some of the comments that I received after sharing. "We don't learn about political issues in school, they're not supposed to teach this, therefore anti-racism. In history, we learn history, in English, we learn English, in math, we learn math. Then, school ain't supposed to delve into politics, you should have the freedom to be racist, First Amendment rights, lol. It's not a crime to dislike someone as long as you don't hurt them, disliking someone is legal. I'm gonna go to the Middle East and get stoned for being Christian and white. Yes, racism exists, but it's not as big as it's made out to be, that is my political opinion. It does not exist systematically within legal institutions like police. Racist people does not equal systemic. My values are racism is bad, but not huge problems within legal institutions, nothing morally wrong with that in my eyes. And while this is just a small sample of Yorktown High School students, you will hear that this is more widespread than you think. If students can get to high school thinking that is their First Amendment right, and that there is nothing morally wrong about being racist, that we do not need to be learning about anti-racism because racism is a political issue, then Yorktown's education system has missed the mark. This is an exact contradiction to the empathy that Yorktown is trying to instill in its students. These are the same students who will grow up to hold positions in politics, law, medicine, business, and so much more, and it's an utter disservice to them, the Yorktown community, and wider communities they will touch as they grow up, for Yorktown Central School District to do better in teaching anti-racism." My next story is from a 2015 alumni. During my senior year at Yorktown High School, I took a Supa English class. We wrote the book Class Matters, which opened my eyes to the inequalities present in America. My class was the reason I chose to major in sociology at college. In my college classes, I was astounded to learn about topics such as redlining, the prison industrial complex, mass incarceration, food insecurity, health disparities, educational inequalities, transportation, and eviction. Underlying all of these topics was the theme of racial inequality. I was naive when I first read Class Matters and realized that poverty and inequality runs rampant in the US and is not something that happens in foreign nations and in history textbooks. If I had not been for my teacher's Supa English class, I probably would not have majored in sociology. In fact, I probably would have continued to live in ignorance of the ongoing racism that exists. In fact, I probably would have continued to live in ignorance of the ongoing racism that exists in this country. Many students who attend Yorktown schools have the privilege of learning about racism rather than experiencing it. I was one of those students and I should have learned more. We as a group, the Yorktown Coalition, we would like to note that most kids do not take this class and that this is only one class from one teacher and one book. We feel as a group that one positive experience does not negate the multitude of negative ones. We just would like to point that out. Next is from a 2012 alumni. "As a student, I don't think that I received comprehensive information on racial injustice or systemic racism in this country. And I think it's long overdue that we as a community come together and change that. Dismantling systemic racism must start with education." The next story that I have is from a parent and PTA member, and they wrote in with three observations. "After picking up my son's books, folders, and school supplies on the assigned day at his elementary school, he was eager to share his work with me. He proudly showed me stories he had written, e-seam project designs he had worked on, and journals showing such incredible progress from the beginning of the school year to March. My son had a phenomenal teacher and we mutually adored her. The very first folder I opened, however, contained a worksheet about George Washington Carver. My son said that it was something that they had worked on during Black History Month. The worksheet was a brief biography with an illustration of what I can only assume was supposed to be George Washington Carver. The image, however, was cartoonishly drawn and very much depicted a white man. In the text, there was not a single mention that Dr. Carver was black. I'm not sure how this worksheet made the cut, but it should not have. Let's get better materials to our teachers and better training to identify problematic texts." Observation two. "In a public conversation, a teacher was seeking support for her student who she believed could benefit from PT/OT evaluation. The student was African-American, and as part of her evidence, she noted that he struggled to open and manipulate his own Lunchable at snack time. This could certainly be viewed as a result of lagging fine motor skills, which PT or OT could help to improve. Her case was understandable. She then mentioned as an aside, quite enough to know that what she was saying was inappropriate, yet loud enough for others to hear. Isn't he on free lunch and aren't Lunchables expensive?" And finally, the final observation. Observation three. "It is common practice in education to group classroom libraries by both level and interest. Unfortunately, in creating interest book bins, one teacher unintentionally segregated her library. She had created bins for animal books, adventure stories, folktales, et cetera, and labeled them as such. She had one bin labeled African-American in which she had placed all of her books portraying black protagonists from River Bridges to Peter and Peter's Chair, a book about a kid adjusting to a new baby sister. In a quiet moment, I showed her the bin and how she could move Peter's Chair to the family bin and other books to the adventure bin and so on and so forth. We desegregated her library and she was genuinely embarrassed, apologetic, and grateful for the help. I do not bring up this memory to shame her or anyone, yet at the same time, her mistake went unnoticed and may have been for a very long time without support. It would not have gone unnoticed to all of the children entrusted with her. They are watching and they are learning. Literally pediatric development is important and without anti-racist pediatric development, this exact story will repeat itself in other ways and in other scenarios." And finally, my last story is from a former parent and resident. "When we first moved to Yorktown, my family and I were touched by the kindness of our neighbors, many of whom extended themselves in ways that make a community beautiful. Over time, however, we came to see that the generosity as a facade that concealed a subtle and insidious racism in the community. Too often, I heard comments about immigrant groups that were taking over Yorktown. My children heard from their friends about Latino or black classmates who had to move around a lot because they can't really afford a nice area like this. And my skin crawled at the condensation that I heard towards the peak-scale residents who should be grateful for the opportunity to sort through her bulk trash for couches and discarded bikes. I was appalled by the lack of critical thinking in my children's curriculum. History was taught as a fixed set of facts and too often revered white heroes such as Christopher Columbus without any mention of the effects of his action on Native peoples. At no point were issues of race or class discussed, and at no point was the curriculum focused on anything other than the white-dominated view of society. I believe firmly that anti-bias education is essential in all schools, but even more urgently needed in schools that lack diversity. Most of all, I was appalled at the core of the community's other unwillingness to look critically at itself to consider how the experiences of non-whites might be different from their own. The dominant message and general tone was that the Yorktown way of life was idyllic and needed to be protected from those coming in from other areas with ideas that challenged the community's beliefs. After only a few years, my husband and I decided that our family had to leave Yorktown. We could no longer pretend that it was the perfect place the community pretended to be. In recent days, I have followed through social media as the controversy surrounding the youth-led protests for racial justice in Yorktown, and I am both horrified and unsurprised at how much opposition the community has shown for this important work. Everything I have witnessed in response to the protests has reaffirmed why we left. Yorktown has left scars on me and my family that will likely never go away. And although we live relatively close now, we actively avoid the area. We do not shop or eat in town and for the most part have cut ties with the people we knew there. Any community that is not able to open its doors and minds to all people is not a place we choose to be." Thank you for listening. I will now be passing the floor to Maya, who will be sharing her personal stories.
Thank you, Lizzie. Hi, everyone. I'm Maya and I will be sharing my story. Like others here today, I've had many positive experiences in my time here in Yorktown from K through 12. Unfortunately, there have been so many instances of racism as well I have witnessed or experienced in Yorktown that I've grown numb and have tried to forget or have forgotten many of them. Here are a few. A high school social studies teacher telling us in class about his experience with prostitutes in a Latin American country and telling us that women switching partners at night was part of their culture. Students who admired and respected him and thought he was cool for talking about this listened intently as he spoke and took his claims about the promiscuity of Hispanic culture to be truth. Never mind it being inappropriate for a teacher to tell me as a 15-year-old what he did or did not do with prostitutes, but that was incredibly racist as well. A substitute teacher who told me and another student that the gays were bad and were doing it on purpose, whatever it is. When I interjected, the teacher proceeded to explain to me why I was wrong for interceding. So many times being asked, "Where are you from? Where are you really from?" Including from a teacher as well. I've lost count. This propagated the general sentiment that I was less American because I wasn't white. And for the record, I'm from Yorktown and that's why I'm here today. I deeply care about my community. The insensitive colonial reenactment we had with Native Americans in elementary school and the pompous with which we celebrated Christopher Columbus, a man who started a genocide against Native Americans. The omission of discussions of racism in America after Martin Luther King, the way we learnt it. It seems like Martin Luther King came and racism was solved. We never talked about privilege, mass incarceration, systemic racism post-1965, redlining, and so forth. Instances where our teachers turned a blind eye to racism in classroom discussions. The teacher either did not intercede or actually actively joined in. Some instances include a classmate saying that he hated old Muslims and worse. In discussing Winston Churchill, we never talked about how he was a war criminal in India and was a large reason behind the Bengal famine. When I brought up the genocide in which Churchill was directly responsible for the death of over 10 million people, I was dismissed and told by my teacher to pay more attention to how the positives balance out the negatives. Another teacher who told me to write the pros and cons of colonialism. This is like glorifying slavery. And when I brought this up, I got in trouble with the teacher and was told by the teacher that he knows other Indians well, which gives him the permission to say what he does. A classroom discussion led by a teacher about how it's not racism, but it's just statistics. And that's why I did cross over to the other side of the road in those situations. These are just a few of many instances. And while there are many negative instances, there are a few positives I remember and I would like to acknowledge. For example, I remember my elementary school librarian standing up for my twin brother when his classmates bullied him and made racist remarks towards him. We need more members like that in our community. And I believe we can build a better community with anti-racism education and training. I will now be passing the floor to my colleague Ty, who will be sharing more stories from our community.
How you doing? Oh, how you doing, everybody? Can you hear me? We're good. How you doing? So my name is Tyja Green. I'm a 2016 Yorktown High School alum. I came here my junior year and I'm a current CPA student at Lehman College. And I'm entertaining right now with various financial firms. So first, I'm going to start off by reading some more community stories that came in from our intake survey. And then I'm going to end it with a personal story for myself. So this one is from a current student. This student said, "I firsthand seen the implicit bias that Yorktown Central Schools teachers exhibit in their classrooms. From prompts such as implying Islam is violent to pretending that the racism was solved by Martin Luther King to imperialism as a means of opening up countries to modern ways, they pass on these thoughts to young malleable children and reinforce stereotypes that they may have not have been exposed to. Also, white students are taught by white teachers who use textbooks written that favor the winners, aka the whites. Therefore, there should be an uplifting of black indigenous and people of color literature, history, and education as part of a larger narrative not seen as something of the past." My next story is from a 2016 alum. "I have many anecdotes for myself and others regarding discrimination at Yorktown. In my 12th grade Senate class, when we were debating body cameras on cops, my teacher brought in a cop to the classroom to describe why body cameras are unnecessary. He was looking for volunteers but didn't indicate that he was speaking to me and said, 'Get up.' I was startled, confirmed he was speaking to me, and then obliged. After the cop left, my teacher asked me in front of the class, 'Why I acted so uncomfortable?' I said, 'I was just surprised.' They then said, 'No, I saw the way you looked at that cop like, 'Get away from me, pig.'" Again, this happened in front of the class. Another teacher, as a black student, walked in, asked in front of the class, 'What's that on your head?' She was confused and he clarified, 'What's going on with your hair? Like, what's that?' She then said, 'It's my natural hair.' Another teacher, upon learning that a black student had gotten into Fordham University, told that you probably only got in because of affirmative action. Other examples include times during 11th grade Senate where two classes would come together and students who spoke about minorities and derogatory race such as all gay people should die and black people don't deserve affirmative action, were received no criticism by teachers, but students who were speaking up about human rights injustices to combat those statements were reprimanded for getting aggressive. Essentially, the experience at Yorktown High School is a white, upper-middle-class, privileged bubble where black and other people of color students are taught that their experience and history is not worth believing, talking about, or studying. Yorktown High School fails as black and people of color students by expressing not only cultural insensitivity but complete disregard for their voices and needs. Also, and this is only regarding the racial injustice at Yorktown High School, there are more anecdotes on LGBTQ, mental health, class, and disability discrimination as well. All of these issues are connected and need to be addressed." So I just want to thank those people for sharing. And now I'm going to share a story of mine. So I just wanted to talk about this because we're racial injustice being... I'm sorry. We're racial injustice being front and center. I wanted to speak here today to express some concerns of mine about the future of education at Yorktown High School. I want to preface this by saying Yorktown does earn its National District Character Award per my experience. I've met some amazing teachers and staff members at Yorktown that really care about the future of the students. However, there is a disconnect between Yorktown and what's going on in the real world. Throughout my time there, I noticed the level of ultra-conservative ideals among students that seemed to be reinforced by what was being taught. In particular, people's opinions about what goes on in urban communities and about who is and isn't working hard enough and pulling themselves up by their bootstraps, people whining and things of the sorts. The issues that Lizzie spoke about earlier heavily speak to this. Now, everybody has a right to their opinion, but when opinions are based on ideals and not facts, then we have a problem. I think that Yorktown has more of an issue of xenophobia than anything else. For example, there was a time when me and a friend of mine who's black were wrestling in a hallway on the last day of school and the teacher came out and said, "Enough. Stop it right now. You people are bringing this crap here to our school." I can only imagine what she meant by that. There were other microaggressive incidents that myself and friends faced, but I won't spend too much time on negativity. I want to say some terms now that we've been hearing all over lately throughout the mainstream media that have been misconstrued to mean things that they're not. Number one, black lives matter. Black lives matter doesn't mean that everyone else's lives don't matter. It just means that we matter just as much as everyone else. Number two, black-on-black crime is not a real thing. So for me, from a person that grew up in an urban black neighborhood, nobody has ever been hurt or had a crime committed against them because they're black. We're talking about proximity crime. People are more likely to commit crimes with and against people that they live around. Also, in most, if not all, inner-city neighborhoods, poverty is the number-one driver of crime of any kind. And there are plenty of drug-ridden, violent, white communities all over America, but we don't call that white-on-white crime. Number three, blue lives matter. Even the concept to compare the danger of being a police officer to black people being disproportionately handled aggressively and murdered by the police is ridiculous. A blue life is a blue shirt. When said shirt comes off, the danger is over. I don't get to take my skin off. Now, while all these things matter to Yorktown schools, Yorktown is an upper-middle-class neighborhood where most students, if they just apply themselves just enough, will be able to get opportunities that most others won't. Many go on to work at some of the biggest companies doing high-level work. Right here in our Yorktown for Justice group, we have engineers, finance professionals, people working at Google, you name it. Much more opportunity than the average kid coming from the inner city. So when students from a place like this are allowed to foster ideals that aren't consistent with real-world facts, it creates problems. A student that's going into healthcare needs to know that black women have the highest mortality rate during pregnancy due to their issues being dismissed by healthcare staff is then being quote-unquote dramatic. A student going into banking and finance needs to know that black people are often denied loans and charged higher interest for loans when they have the same metrics and qualifications as their white counterparts. The same students also need to know about redlining, the process in which the federal government gave banks color-coded maps and told them which areas they could give out housing loans. The green areas were white and the red areas were black. And this wasn't about class. Black neighborhoods across class levels, middle class, upper class, impoverished, you name it, there were all deemed red areas. Students going into real estate needs to know that homes owned by black people are generally appraised at lower values than equivalent homes owned by white people, by appraisers. Students going into venture capital needs to know that black people get the lowest rate of venture capital funding out of any founders of any companies. Civil engineers and people that plan and work in government need to know about the Federal Highway Act of 1956 that built highways directly into areas of thriving black business and effectively destroyed most of their wealth, which has led to the lack of urban development in many black urban areas that we're seeing today. And it wasn't a coincidence. It was very much intentional. That can be Google, by the way. This is a shortlist of many of the disparities that face black Americans today. If people knew these things, they wouldn't ask questions like, "Why are many black people poor? Why don't they just work harder? Why don't they just pull themselves up from their bootstraps like everybody else?" People won't ask those kind of questions because they'll know there are systematic issues that cause and perpetuate this. Students in Yorktown need to know what's happening in the real world. They don't need to be sugar-coated or coddled or hidden away from real life because then when they eventually go into these positions in these industries, they'll make the same decisions that have led to the inequities that we have today. Anti-racism isn't a left or right or political thing. It's a human rights issue. It's an American issue. I'm currently an intern at EY, one of the big four accounting firms, and they've committed millions of dollars into anti-racism. The contributions and the stance they're taking against racism financially are just a Google search away to learn more about. Yorktown Central School District needs to be on that same energy. We need to be on the right side of American history and make a safe space for all students and equip their students with the knowledge and tools of the real world so they can make a difference. I just want to say in closing, thank you for having me, and I will now pass the mic back to Maya to speak to our demands.
Thank you, Fatima, Sarah, Lizzie, and Ty for sharing these powerful stories from our community. It's been emotional reading the stories that have been shared with us and I can't imagine how difficult it was for our brave community members to share this. It takes a lot for those who have directly experienced this to come forward. These stories are real, personal, and speak volumes to how we really need to do better as a community. And it is so important for our administration and our greater community to understand the gravity of this issue. So I'm Maya. I graduated from Yorktown High School in 2013, Carnegie Mellon University School of Computer Science in 2017. I currently work for Waymo, formerly known as Google Self-Driving Car Project. I will be sharing the goals of our petition around anti-racism education, which has gathered the support of over 5,500 community members. Within our petition, we've included... Oh, could you switch to the next slide? Thank you. Within our petition, we've included some key goals we believe the district must address in the near term and future in an effort to help start this dialogue. One, forming a diverse committee of administrators, teachers, students, parents, alumni, and other active community members to spearhead this effort in the spirit of transparency and accountability. Two, expanding any current anti-racism curriculum to address ongoing systemic and institutional racial issues. Host the civil rights movement of 1965. Three, being a district of upstanders against racial injustice as we see it happening across the country and especially when it's within the Yorktown community. Four, diversifying the teaching and administrative faculty. Next slide, please. Our first request is that the district commit to creating an anti-racism task force that is specifically dedicated to lead and enact the petition points to follow. In Dr. Hatter's letter sent out to the YCSD community a few weeks ago regarding this topic, he commits to building a task force, but it only includes teachers and faculty. We are asking this district to form a diverse committee of administrators, teachers, students, parents, alumni, and other active community members to spearhead racial justice education and ensure racial equity in our schools. This committee should be responsible for acting as a liaison between the district and the community. A dedicated resource group is essential to bringing successful change within the curriculum and school. Not only will the task force be responsible for developing a strategy and rollout plan, it will ensure that constant dialogue occurs between the district and the community, which is why it's so important that it includes community members as well. Next slide, please. There's no doubt that the curriculum taught at Yorktown is robust, nurturing, and stimulating. We have teachers in our district who have gone above and beyond to craft syllabi and course material that has not only challenged us but has left us better in many ways. However, there is an overwhelmingly shared belief among current students, alumni, parents, and community members alike that the curriculum at Yorktown is not adequately anti-racist. As stated in many of the community stories, students are graduating from Yorktown and entering college only to realize that they were never exposed to more than one perspective of global and American history or the real state of current racial relations in our nation. Yorktown students need to study an anti-racist curriculum starting from their earliest years and through their formative high school years. This will not only create a safer learning environment for our increasingly diverse student body, it will create a more tolerant culture within Yorktown schools as well as a better-rounded students. And so, we are requesting that the district revise and expand the existing anti-racism curriculum for grades K through 12 to address topics such as racial identity, the contemporary history of race relations in America post-1965, and ongoing systemic and institutional racist, racial issues. This curriculum should be interdisciplinary and especially prominent in English and social studies classes. In English classes, students should be assigned more texts directly related to systemic racism, allyship, and activism. In social studies classes, teachers should directly address issues such as privilege, police brutality, redlining, mass incarceration, and the continuous oppression of the indigenous populations. Topics which I personally never remember discussing in school and I was an avid studious student. The district should introduce regularly scheduled assemblies and workshops. We can't just stop at Martin Luther King. Next slide, please. Our next request has to do with the notion that I think we can all agree on that for the majority of students, school is sort of a second home. School is where they are spending most of their waking hours outside of their houses. School is where students make most of their friends. And naturally, what happens at school has great impact on a student, both positive and negative. This is absolutely, this is why it's absolutely imperative that school be a safe space for each and every student that walks the halls of Yorktown schools. It needs to be the goal of every administrator, educator, parent, student, and community member at Yorktown. And unfortunately, it is apparent that we haven't been able to ensure this for every student historically, as we saw in the community stories. In order to feel safe at school, it is essential that students feel that the school is speaking out and taking actions when they or the groups that they identify with are in need of support. We need to be a district of upstanders against racial injustice. And the district should stand in solidarity with black and indigenous people of color by releasing statements of acknowledgement and support for affected communities, for affected communities when public incidences of racial injustice occur. The district must also take a way more active role in combating racism in our own community. We hear and heard in the stories earlier of many instances of racism, prejudice, and unacceptable actions in which the school failed to respond in the right way. Going forward, the district must make it a primary duty to create and maintain a safe space for each student, which includes holding faculty, staff, and students accountable for racist and prejudiced acts against other students. Being a bystander to racism is being complicit in the act itself. We must actively be upstanders. I will now give the floor to my colleague, Amna, who will be sharing more how we envision Yorktown being a leader in this racial justice initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Hello, everyone. My name is Amna Chaudry and I'm a graduate of the YHS class of 2012 and the Cornell University class of 2016. Since graduating, I've held roles in management consulting, strategy, and finance for a variety of publicly traded companies. I'm here as the eldest of a long line of girls who have graduated or will graduate from the Yorktown schools and as one of the few South Asian Muslims who's attended Yorktown historically. I look back at my time at Yorktown and recognize the need to do better as a community and district. I hope our work will improve the educational experience of future YCSD students. I'll be taking some time to talk through the remainder of our petition points, and so without further ado. Um, could you move, could you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. The fourth point in our petition asks the district to diversify the teaching and administrative faculty across Yorktown schools. As evidenced in the community stories we all just heard, it's clear that unfortunately, students are constantly at the receiving end of discrimination and microaggressions at the hand of the faculty and staff at Yorktown. What's also evidenced by the current racial and demographic makeup of the district faculty is that minority students are hard-pressed to find teachers that look like them and can't relate to current, can't relate to the current faculty makeup. What a non-diverse faculty results in is a suboptimal learning environment for a variety of reasons, including, but not limited to, one, diversity in the workplace results, is results to be proven to be, to foster a more tolerant and inclusive workplace. In this case, the workplace is a school district that's educating thousands of children in our community who deserve a more inclusive environment. Two, the current state is as such that minority students are finding difficulty finding teachers and authoritative figures in Yorktown Central School District that they may identify with or relate to. And we all know how impactful teachers can be in a student's life. Aside from our parents, they're often some of our initial role models. Lack of diversity in our teachers means that there are students in our schools who are struggling more than their white peers to see teachers as role models because they simply don't look like them. The implications and disadvantages of this can be really, really strong. Minority students may struggle to make connections with white teachers the way white students do, which puts them at a disadvantage when it comes to something like college recommendations. Minority students might also have trouble imagining themselves as future teachers because growing up, they saw that teachers are overwhelmingly just from one race in their school. We need to make sure Yorktown is making active changes in this area. And so, we as a coalition and a community are asking that the district specifically aim to hire more black and indigenous and people of color teachers and administrators. The district must also make a public commitment to improve minority representation across our faculty and staff. And in the spirit of transparency and accountability, we believe that demographic data of faculty composition should be made available to the Yorktown community on an annual basis. Next slide, please. Our fifth and final request is that the district mandate diversity training for our faculty and staff. Again, as we heard in our community stories, it's apparent that many of our teachers are not sufficiently equipped with the training and background required to teach without bias and prejudice. And I want you all to keep in mind, community stories are a small representation of what may be occurring day in and day out even today at Yorktown. Teachers are the authoritative figure in a classroom. Not only are they setting the tone for their class, they have direct control over the discussions, the dialogue, and the sentiments that are permitted or not permitted in their classroom. All teachers, but particularly teachers in a district like Yorktown, which is a top district, need to be responsible for ensuring that every student that goes through their class feels included, heard, and appreciated. However, without the right training and resources in place, many teachers are failing to remain cognizant of these responsibilities and instead are both knowingly and unknowingly making prejudiced remarks out loud, singling out students of color in tokenizing situations, and teaching subject matter in a way that's not only not inclusive, but potentially traumatic for students of different backgrounds. One way the district needs to actively combat such behavior is to mandate extensive diversity, inclusion, sensitivity, and unconscious bias training for faculty and staff. Unconscious bias are those macro, microaggressions that we're seeing being spewed from teachers left and right. And so, we believe that training is one way we can, we can get over this as a group. Training should include specific topics on race and minority empowerment and should be administered by reputable vetted organizations that are qualified to do this. I would like to stress that this training needs to be mandatory because every faculty, staff, and administrator is touching the lives of our students. The first step to eliminating biased statements and actions made by our educators is to make them more aware of the ways in which, in which unconscious biases can manifest in different settings and also equip, equip them with the training they need to create the classroom environment we all wish for our students. Next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation of our petition points. I'd like to reemphasize that since the publishing of this petition, it has gathered tons and tons of support in the form of 5.5 thousand signatures, tons of interest from local and regional news outlets, as well as countless community members who have personally reached out to us to voice their support. We're also proud to announce that this petition has put Yorktown on the map as one of the first districts locally to initiate this sort of dialogue between the community and the Board of Education. Since the publishing of this petition, many other districts are reaching out to us and using Yorktown as an example to insight change in their own districts as well. We are leaders not only locally, but we're now also advising dozens of schools from Texas, California, New Jersey, and so many more across the country. We're hoping that this petition is just the first step of Yorktown becoming the North Star for diversity and inclusion within, within the nation. And we're already make, taking that step because we're helping all these districts do this across the nation. I'm super hopeful that the future collaboration, dialogue, and transparency between the Yorktown community and the Board of Education will also make us a national example of a district that was on the right side of history in these trying times. The day following the publication of our petition some weeks ago, Superintendent Hatter released a letter outlining steps that YCSD administration has already decided to take, which we're super proud of. We're also pleased to learn of the anti-racism policies recently committed to by the Alliance for Save Kids. These are amazing initial steps. However, our demands are a bit more specific and we feel we can do even better as a community. We're proud that our district commits to offering faculty, staff, and Board of Education cultural awareness seminars addressing racism, LGBTQ, and religious topics. This is great. However, we ask that these seminars are mandatory and conduct, conducted by reputable and vetted organizations. And why stop at seminars? We're asking for trainings. The district is also committed to forming an equity and cultural awareness task force as Superintendent Hatter mentioned in the beginning of this meeting. We believe that this task force has to expand to include the wider community, namely, parents, students, alumni, and active community members. What we'd really like to see is plans, timelines, and progress be shared with the greater community in the spirit of transparency and accountability. I think it's quite evident to all on this group how invested so much of our community is in this issue and I feel it's only right that we keep them involved and share the progress with them. We all deeply care about our town, which is why we've been working so consistently for the last month, every day, through weekends, collaborating with current students and our accomplished alumni nationally and internationally. We've been speaking widely with the community, parents, teachers, even our council members to understand how best to bring racial justice to Yorktown and how to have these important conversations. To parents on this call and in the greater community, you guys are critical members of our community and we would love more of you to get involved in bringing racial justice education to our Yorktown community. We see you leading the community representation of our task force and spearheading future collaborative efforts with the board. To raise our children into empathetic and successful members of our society, children who will eventually grow into community leaders as Ty mentioned, we must create an environment in our schools in which everyone feels included and therefore can thrive to their full potential. We must also equip our students with the resources to critically engage in difficult conversations and teach them what's actually going on in the world. These conversations have to start at a young age. Education is such a key part of this movement and all change must start at home, and for us, that means Yorktown. Board of Education, we are so grateful for your time today and the opportunity to speak on this really, really important topic. It's so important to so many of us and we're really excited to collaborate with you to make Yorktown its absolute best. Uh, as mentioned on the screen, please feel free to reach out to us at racialjusticeycsd@gmail.com if anyone has any questions or comments or wants to get involved, and we thank you again.
Uh, I want to thank you all. You, you, you are all amazing, really, really amazing. I don't want to thank you for sharing your stories. Um, they were extremely moving. I, I don't necessarily have words for them. Ron, I don't know if you want to say anything before we move.
I would. May I?
Yes.
May I? To our alumni, thank you so much for bringing this to us. I appreciate you sharing your experiences, your pain and, and the reality that you experienced. There, there just is no other way to put it. What I want to share with you, and I, and I think you get this sense, I really do think you get the sense, I want to share with you my personal commitment to this work. You inspire me, you motivate me, or students inspire me and their experiences inspire me in Yorktown. And I'm raising my own children here. I live in this community. And it should live up, we should live up to the promise of, of our community and of our district and in terms of the trainings and all the things that we identified, there's more to come. Our task force is just getting started and they have met. We have our co-chairs on the line as well because I wanted them to hear. And members of our task force are on this call because we thought it was important to listen and to hear and to acknowledge what happened. And we're actually having a meeting tomorrow. Our task force is meeting tomorrow. And I assure you, this will be discussed and your experiences will be discussed and, and our next steps will be discussed. So, I appreciate you sharing this with us. Please know that you have, I have heard you. I, I have heard you. Our task force chairs have heard you and, and I hope you get the sense that we're serious about the work and silence is not an option. Silence is not acceptable. Silence is not acceptable. And we will show our voice through our actions. And, and that is where I will leave it. And, and I just want to thank you again for, for sharing your experiences because you have no idea how meaningful they were to me and to my colleagues on this call. I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the time today.
Thank you for having us.
So what we're going to do is we're going to go to the public comment portion and then at the end of that, the board will make comments if they choose. So we're going to remove you for all from panelists back to attendee. And people can start to raise their hand if they'd like to speak while I read how public comment is going to work. If you guys are okay with that? Alright, so, um, just so you know how public comment works. We don't usually have a lot of people, so I just feel it's really important to tell you about it. It's an opportunity for the public to make a statement to the board up to three minutes in length. It's not a question and answer period. Our board meetings are strictly regulated under New York state law and they're not, as some of you may believe, a town type forum where the public can go back and forth with the dialogue. Our meetings are conducted for board business. And it is, and it is for our business. It's under New York state law, our meetings are required to be held in public. Boards of education in New York are not required to have public comment at their meetings, but we always choose to do so in Yorktown because we very much want to hear what the community has to say. We want your ideas and we want your input. In terms of public comment at our meetings, in order to give everybody the same opportunity to speak and be heard, there are procedures which we follow at every meeting and I will go over the accommodations that we've had to make now during Zoom with our pandemic. Our comments are limited to three minutes. Our district clerk, Avette Segal, will keep time. We will not be extending grant, granting extensions of time, and that's always been our policy. To assist speakers tonight, Avette will hold up a sign indicating when you have thirty seconds left. And we'll say it when your time is up. Anyone wishing to speak must electronically raise their hand. So you are all in a Zoom attendees. When we see your hand raised, we will move you one person at a time to a panelist. We may not be able to see the order that your hands are raised in, but we will get to everybody. Your name will be called out when it's time for you to speak and you will be moved over to panelists. Please state your first and last name, as well as your address or connection to the Yorktown Central School District before you begin speaking. We do require both audio and video on for a speaker to be able to comment. If there's a problem and we cannot see and both see and hear you, we will take the next person in line to comment and you can try one more time again. If that does not work, then we apologize because there sometimes there are difficulties. But then we ask you to please submit your comment to us by email. You can email yorktownboe@yorktown.org. Important again, as I stated with the panelists, we do not allow the name, the use of personally identifiable, identifiable information, including names of students or employees when addressing any incidents or concerns. This has never been allowed at any of our meetings. So please do know that we very much want to hear what you have to say, and we do not want to have to mute any speaker who goes over the time limit or uses any such kind of personally identifiable information. Also, again, if there's anything we deem inappropriate in either your audio or video feed, you, you will be removed from panelist status and not allowed to return. We're asking that everybody respects our policies and procedures for they hear for everybody's benefit, so that everybody is treated fairly. We thank you all for listening because we felt it was important and we appreciate all of our new members here at our meeting tonight and wanting to make sure that everybody understood our procedures and so everybody has a voice. Please make sure, one other thing, that the name on your screen matches the name as you raise your hand and, and state your name and address because sometimes people's names don't match the computers. So can we see anybody who's raised their hand to speak? We have, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your name and I really apologize. Nataya Anababa. We're only bringing one person in at a time.
Yes.
I have two.
I promoted her to panelist. There should only be one.
I have two people on panelists.
No.
Okay. I need you, Nataya, I need you to engage your audio and your video, please. Thank you. Welcome.
Um, this is Nalini Rao.
I'm sorry for your name.
Hi, good evening. I live on Hunterbrook Road in Yorktown Heights. And I'm a parent of three children who were, who were born in Westchester County and we went to the Yorktown Center School District. We know the elementary, the middle, and the high schools well. We came to Coatland about thirty-five years ago and to Yorktown twenty-three years ago. The school, the proximity to IBM, beautiful woods and hills, some of the reasons we settled here. I've been teaching in this community for twenty-three years. And while raising a family and building a lifetime of friendship with fellow Yorktown dwellers, we found wonderful dedicated teachers in the school, but we have also met teachers who have looked the other way when children were bullied and we've met teachers who are insensitive. Few instances, in first grade, the teacher told me when I went to meet her that I should speak only English with my daughter. I speak several languages fluently. She then told the mother who came next, who happened to be white, that it is wonderful that a child spoke French and she should continue her bilingual immersion. In elementary school, the teacher talked about how lucky India was to have the British rule them. And my child came and asked me, is that so? I said, well, no. And this is insensitive at several levels, especially since our country here, the U S, went to war to, with the British rule. And when my eldest daughter went to the school counselor, we found the discussions with the counselor really strange and she seemed to harp more on how we looked than on our daughter's grades, abilities, and potential. My daughter was told she should not look higher than local community colleges and small colleges. We disagreed with her and my oldest child went to Harvard and that counselor luckily was later replaced. During our twins' times, late, much later, we found that many of the Hispanic students in the school were not actively encouraged to go all out and try for admission as scholarships. And we found that they did not have an advocate, like we were advocates for our kids and they were falling, falling between the cracks. One of my daughter's friend, I remember, was told again not to look beyond community colleges. Luckily, the child was intelligent, hardworking, and was her own advocate and she disregarded that advice from the school counselor and went on to a great state university. Another Hispanic friend, however, did not go to college at all. And they were along our lives, along with a wonderful life here, we also had, did meet many subtle and not so subtle instances of racism as such as asking, where are you really from and were you born here? We got so used to it that we just buried it and moved on. But there were teachers who did stand up for us and, and when they did it, listened the sting. I think that is really important that we implement an anti racism education. This is a community which deeply cares and we need to have the mandatory training for teachers and educators and administrators. And we need to have a really all inclusive curriculum. It's important that we all work together so that this community reflects our universal values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
We're going to take Catherine Graybosh.
Hello, can you see me?
Yes, we can. So we can hear you.
Great, perfect. I am Catherine Graybosh and I live on Mohansick Avenue in Yorktown Heights. And I am a fairly new member of this community. We just moved up here last year and are really enjoying being part of the Yorktown community. And first, I just wanted to say that I am so proud to be in a community where the alumni speak so wonderfully and so eloquently about the issues that we are facing, not just in Yorktown, but everywhere. And I, I commend them for that, that work and all they have done for that. And I am also a fellow educator in a local district. And I have to say, when this all started with George Floyd, I contacted Dr. Hatter and I was very pleased to hear back from him and hear the commitment that Yorktown Central School District does have towards anti racist education and curriculum. And I just wanted to show my support. I do agree that if there is a task force that is extended, that community members, parents, alumni, students definitely need to be a part of that. I would love to be a part of that as well, being a parent of a student who's currently in third grade, going into fourth, and another one who will be in the schools in, in the next few years. I think that we as community members can truly make a change. And I do believe that if our equity task force that is already established has actions and goals and real tasks that they're going to enact, I think a lot of good can come from that. And I do hope that the, the changes we see, and I think the alumni spoke to this, that it needs to be more than just Band-Aids, little things to be changed, but really a deep systemic change that will help all of our students feel safe and comfortable in the society and Yorktown community where we live and work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing that. We're going to go to Dax Armstrong.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, wonderful. Um, I just wanted to share, okay, so I have to introduce myself. I'm Dax Armstrong. I live on High Ridge Road here in Yorktown. I've been here for about three years. I also work for the Yorktown Central School District. This is my first year. I'm very proud of the work that I'm getting a chance to do and participate in here at the district. And I just wanted to say how moved I was by our speakers today. It's really wonderful to see young professionals that came out of our schools that are, that are so, I'm, I'm telling you, I, I don't think I could have done it better and really, um, I'm so impacted by what you've said tonight and I, I can't even describe it and it's definitely going to be front and center with the work that we're doing. And I do hear what you guys are saying. I'd really like to get the, the PowerPoint that you presented us with today because I'd like to use that to kind of inform some of our work and for me to steal some notes and some of these wonderful ideas that our young people have. I wanted to just let you know that I am an ally, that I do believe in the work. I do believe in the message that you're presenting for us here today and I'm going to do everything in my power to move us forward in the district, in this community. I'm a member of this community. And, and I really believe that we can, as you said, be leaders for the country in this work. So I, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm so glad that I'm, that I'm able to be here and, and witness firsthand and see this. And, you know, I, I, I made it a mission of, of my own as a young person to learn about black history when no one else would teach it to me. And I remember my father telling me the importance of learning black history, of learning Native American history, of learning Hinduism and Buddhism and, and Muslim religion all throughout my life. And what I understand is that revolution and great change, like the civil rights movement, it, it, it takes a village. And it, you know, if we do it as a community, it will happen and I, and I do believe in that. And I'm just, yes, and I, I just want to show everyone, let everyone know my support and, and that I'll do everything that I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dax. And we're so grateful that you and Michelle are leading the task force. We know we're in good hands with the two of you, so we appreciate of that.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to go to Hari Roomworthie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Hi, so I'm Hari. I, Hari Da Wuthi. I went to the Yorktown Central School District from K through twelve. I got my bachelor's in math from NYU. In twenty seventeen, I graduated from YHS twenty thirteen and right now I'm a fourth year PhD student in mathematics at Notre Dame. And I just wanted to tell you why it is so important and why it would help to have some culture, cultural sensitivity training and a training in the, and that would make people more aware of modern day racism as it manifests in our school and our community. When I know that the people are there with me, it lessens the sting of the racism which we face in the school and elsewhere. And when I don't get that sense the racist incidents which I face and which many other people face to a much greater degree than me. This is that they face and which I face. It's a dead weight on me that, that stays with me. So I just wanted to give a few examples. When my librarian stood up for me, when some high racial incident happened on my bus, it did not stick with me. I was able to brush it off because he stood up for me and I could just dismiss it as more bullying and I forgot about it like a few days later. When I was renting the car with friends on spring break and the person at the rental counter asked, who is this, the stalker? I was with two white people. When my friends did not stand up for me, that stood with, that stuck with me and it still sticks with me. And then I just recently brought it up with them, but it, um, it has stuck with me for a long time and it's, it's a dead, dead weight on my shoulders. When a fellow YHS alumni, when I told, when I confided and heard about some of the things that happened to me, said, oh, whatever happened to me, that was something that stuck with me. So knowing that my neighbors are aware of the challenges that we face is really important and it can lessen the sting of racism that happens to us in real life. So I think it would be really good if we could have examples that have, that show how it manifests in our community in real life and, and racism training that we do. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. We're going to go to Rachel Frederick.
Can everybody see and hear me? Am I good? Okay, my name is Rachel Frederick. I'm a parent of three in the Yorktown Central School District. Want, my oldest is in the schools right now. So firstly, I'd like to recognize and commend the work and effort by the Yorktown alumni. They are a true force for good and a testament to what Y C S D can produce. I'm speaking tonight as a parent in the Y C S D community, one who is concerned with social justice, social change, accurate and inclusive history and social emotional education. I worked with wonderful Yorktown students to co-organize a March for Civil Justice last month in the community. The students I met are kind, intelligent, and excited about becoming The students I met are kind, intelligent, and excited about becoming civically engaged. They were, however, disheartened by their lack of education surrounding race and racism in America. I tried to think of an example of social education or diversity inclusion in my oldest son's school experience so far to speak to the benefit and the positivity of these experiences, and I couldn't think of a single one. I was excited when the district laid out a plan for empathy education. As an educator myself, I expected a social emotional curriculum. I have not seen or heard of any empathy curriculum teaching lessons or resources. The initiative seems to have fallen short of the mark for actionable change. That is my experience as the parent of an elementary student. And I would like to make sure that this doesn't happen in the same way. I would like to see that the initiative is amplified significantly. And I think that pushing for diversity and inclusion within our schools can mesh with that goal of empathy education. We've all recognized the need for the same three things: diversifying the staff, the need for anti-bias and cultural awareness training, and immediate curriculum reform. All of these goals are in alignment between the alumni and the students and the district goals. Nobody is disagreeing on the needs for these changes. However, as a parent and teacher myself, I'm here to show support and to say that these words cannot be empty promises with slow and incremental change. We cannot allow this initiative of anti-bias education to become nice words in an email or a poster outside of our buildings with little action behind it. There is so much community support behind this push. And I fully support these changes and would like to advocate for oversight and actionable, measurable change immediately. We need full transparency with this work. And I hope there are professionals in the field of diversity and inclusion or cultural awareness education to be consulted over the implementation, oversight, and transparency. A year-long teacher training series will not cut it. I would like to see people who can guide YCSD school buildings to include diverse perspectives and assemblies, experiences, trips, performances, books, resources, and materials in real ways. We can and we must do better. I am so grateful that the district has outlined intended goals for this much-needed reform. YCSD students and alumni with the support of parents are here to support, to advocate for that reform, to go faster and further, and to partner in ways that make this goal fulfilled and one for all of community members. We look forward to supporting these changes throughout the year and the years to come. My hope for my children is that they get to be taught by diverse teachers, learn diverse perspectives, hear diverse history narratives, have diverse friends, master social emotional skills, learn and use empathy, think critically, and be educated holistically. We need to make space for that by breaking down harmful practices such as whitewashed history, curriculum, materials, and resources, perpetuating narrow-minded perspectives and implicit bias in hiring practices that create homogeneous staffing in entire buildings. In the past two years, I have had four friends, close friends, withdraw their children from YCSD public elementary schools for the reasons echoed in the sentiments expressed tonight.
Rachel, you need to wrap it up. Okay, I'm sorry, but it's three minutes. So just that's fine.
I have had countless other friends of color refuse to even consider Yorktown as a place to live or as a place to educate their children for these same reasons. We are appeasing a certain population to the exclusion of others. And we are the problem if we continue to allow this. Thank you for your time and your extra time.
You're welcome. Thank you for your statement. We appreciate it. We're gonna go to Michelle Copeland. Before Michelle gets on, there's a Lily who's got her hand raised, but unless I have a last name, I can't call on her. So there needs to be a name on that screen. Go ahead, Michelle. But you need audio.
There we go.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm glad you're not driving now.
I know. Well, first of all, I wanted to apologize about that. I just, I really wanted to personally say thank you to the alumni and everyone who shared stories tonight. They were profound and enlightening. I'm relatively new to Yorktown myself. But I think also a lot of these things happen and aren't widely understood by the rest of the community or known. And I think that's a huge part of the work that we can do moving forward. So I really just wanted to say thank you and that I am incredibly honored and humbled to be doing this work with this district. And then I really look forward to working more with the community of people who presented today and hearing more of their stories. And that I look forward to the amazing things that we can all do together. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your leadership on the committee. We appreciate it.
It's my honor.
Thank you. We're gonna go to Patricia Sullivan-Rothberg. And again, Lily, if I don't see a last name, I'm not gonna be able to call on you. I really do want to call on you.
Oh, hello. Can you, can everybody see me or hear me?
Now we can. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the time, board. It has been hard to hear tonight's meeting. I'm sure it's hard for you all. It's hard for me as a parent. I'm Patricia Sullivan-Rothberg. I have a rising senior. And there have been some wonderful things that we've experienced here in the schools. But there has been, as the group discussed tonight, some things where we need to do work. I am incredibly impressed with this group of alumni. I would like to help in any way I can. I think we have a lot of work to do. And while my son has one more year left, I will be in the community and I would like to help. I have friends who've left the district because of what they've experienced. I've had friends that are still in the district and I've witnessed some really difficult things. Embarrassingly, I have not come forward because I've been afraid. And I think of myself as someone who speaks out. So when the protest happened, it was such a watershed moment for me. I have been waiting for a group like this for 16 years. We've been in the district. So there's a lot of work for us to do around the country, and there's a lot of work for us to do locally. I'm very impressed that the district is opening their hearts and minds. It has weighed heavy on our family with some of what, and I'm white and privileged, but some of what we've witnessed and heard about. This generation of alums, we are so lucky. One of the silver linings of sheltering in places, they all came home. And they're vested in making our district better. So as much as it's hard to hear tonight, I'm just really happy that we're gonna embrace this. It's not gonna be easy. It's gonna require work. And there's more I want to say, but I know my three minutes is gonna be up. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Patricia. We appreciate it. Lily Chow, you got your last name up. Wonderful. Come on in.
Hi. Hi. My name's Lateshun. I graduated Yorktown in 2013. And I went to school at Wash U in St. Louis, graduated in 2017. Went to NYU for medical school, graduated this past year. And now I'm doing my residency in internal medicine at NYU. I just wanted to start off by saying how in awe I am of my classmates, both my my classmates who I graduated with and spanning all years for being able to share their stories. Something that really struck me was how powerful it is to me to have a place where, you know, we are heard without fear of judgment. Later on, after leaving Yorktown, I think a lot of my adult life, I looked back at my time at Yorktown and felt this conflict between wanting to speak out and wanting to express my anger and my sadness about what was happening, but also being afraid and being upset at myself for being afraid. And sometimes I think that the difficult thing with the microaggressions that took place when I was a student, when people asked me where I was from, when they made fun of my food, I guess there's less of a microaggression, more of a direct aggression. But when I was a kid and people would make Chinese eyes at me, was that I let the I let where I grew up from and what people around me felt and said make me feel like I was the crazy one for being upset. I thought I was too sensitive and too weak. And I think a lot of growing up, becoming a doctor, learning about the things that happen to patients, was being able to understand that what was happening to me was ridiculous. And that if people graduate Yorktown not understanding that that's ridiculous and enter positions of power, like the profession I've chosen, where you have this tremendous responsibility to advocate for your patients and care about who you take care of, for people to not understand the importance of recognizing racism, that's just not, that's just not okay. And so I really want to thank everyone for speaking out today. And I really want to thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, Lily, and thank you for sharing. Vidat Gashi. Good evening.
Good evening. Finally got me.
Got it.
Sorry about that. Well, I want to join with everybody else and saying how impressed I was with the people speaking. My name again is Vidat Gashi. I'm the county legislator representing Yorktown, or one of them representing Yorktown. Colin Smith also does. I'm also a parent of two kids in Yorktown schools, both in Brookside. And while I didn't go to Yorktown, I grew up in Yorktown and I went to Lakeland High School. I think a lot of the experiences I heard, I recognized. As a guy named Vidat Gashi, an immigrant and Muslim, I experienced a lot of the same sorts of things, the microaggressions, being told my bag is ticking and you know, what kind of name is that? It's so interesting or whatever. And you know, sometimes by very well-meaning people, oftentimes not. I think growing up, we viewed these things differently. I think I accepted them differently. It's been encouraging and exciting for me to see this, I think, discourse change and evolve. And I think here, as with a couple of other issues, guns and some of the other ones, the youth are really doing a heck of a lot better job than we are. I'm so impressed. I'd like to encourage as much as possible in any way that I can be helpful through my role or otherwise, I'd like to offer that help and just say thank you again for doing it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. I don't see anybody else. Is there anybody else wanting to speak before we? Oh, there we go. Emma Cation.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So hello, I graduated Yorktown in 2015. I went all the way through from kindergarten on. I'm now getting my master's in public health at Columbia University. So I actually, for me, had a wonderful time throughout Yorktown. In a lot of ways, I thrived. And I don't think it was until I went to college that I really realized a lot of the problems that existed there. But one thing that is really stark for me is that I have an adoptive little brother who's black and his experience cannot be more different than mine. And so actually, Fatima, shout out, love you, girl. She reached out to me and asked if I wanted to share, or if JJ wanted to share some of his experiences. He's my little brother. So we sat down and started to write out things that have happened to him. And it is, sorry. It is so devastating to read and to see all at once is just like, it really hits your heart. He actually decided, after looking at all, that he was not comfortable to share anymore. I kind of asked him, why gently nudging him? And he's like, I don't need people to have another reason to look at me. He's like, I'm out. Like, I don't want to do this. So after a little while, I waited a week or two and I asked him again. And he said, he looked at me and he said, "If anybody is feeling these things that I'm feeling, they should leave." And he walked away. And it's really hard to hear that from him because obviously, when there's something wrong in a society, it's not the, it's not the individuals that should leave. It's the society that should adapt and adjust and grow with them. But I also understand the pain of a 16-year-old who's been called the N-word, who's been discriminated and belittled by his peers, by his teachers, and by administrators throughout the district who haven't believed his stories, who tell him that he's being too sensitive, who say, okay, well, were you doing something wrong that made this happen? And I can't tell you how much I really appreciate this coalition coming together and starting this change. And it's a really beautiful thing. And I would love to be more part of it. And thank you to the board for letting people talk. I think this is really incredible. I haven't heard this happening in other districts. So I think that it's really amazing that we can be the leaders in a fight like this and be on the right side of history. So thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I don't see any more hands raised. I'll give one more call out for hands. Anybody? All right, then we're gonna shut public comment. One more shot? Nobody? Okay. We're gonna go on to board comment. If anybody wishes to speak, just raise your hand so I know. Go ahead, Lisa.
So I just wanted to say quickly that I appreciate everybody's comments, both the students and the community members. And I want to thank all of you for coming out and talking with us tonight. I'm sorry it had to be in this format rather than in person, because I would have liked to have met all of you and heard your stories personally. Emma, thank you for your comments. I know that was difficult for you. And I appreciate you taking the time to share that with us. What I heard was two things. One, the majority of our students had a good experience at Yorktown, which is encouraging, which means that the majority of our administration and our staff is doing a great job, which we knew, right? We know they're doing a great job. But the other thing I heard is that there are some that are not doing a great job, and we need to get to the bottom of that. And we also need to continue to work and educate and learn from each other and take our award of empathy and our goal and philosophy of empathy and go further because we haven't gone far enough. I mean, the students who have spoken today and the parents who have also spoken today have shown us that we just haven't gone far enough. So thank you for all of you, to all of you for your time and sharing your stories, especially to those of you who found it incredibly difficult to share. I really appreciate it. And in terms of the task force that the school district is putting together, it's only the beginning. So I know you guys have a lot of requests and you want more done, and you want more people on it. Give it a moment. Everyone, take a breath. It's going to happen. We're Yorktown. We are excellent. And we're gonna get there. I don't remember who it was that made the comment that we are the leader. We will always be the leader. We've been the leader in everything up to now, and we will continue to do that. Look at our community. Look at our kids. I mean, they're amazing. How could we not be the leader with them behind us? That's all I have.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody else wishing to speak? I know Mike wants to speak. If he wants to go last, I'll say my statement now. So Mike, let me know. I can't hear you if you're muted.
Yeah, Rashmi.
Oh, Rashmi, you want to speak? I didn't see Rashmi. I looked, and nobody said yes. Okay, go ahead, Rashmi.
So I do want to thank our alumni for, you know, coming tonight and for sharing your thoughts and for joining us. I hope that this is the first of many conversations that we'll have on this journey to listening and learning and making changes. As a minority myself, I think there is no place for racism in our community. Like Lisa said, we will do better. We can do better, and this is just the beginning of our collective work. So, you know, thank you.
Cheryl, were you looking to speak?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words. I wanted to thank this group for coming forward. They're a very impressive group, and most of all, I realize that there's pain in telling these stories. So I really applaud you for coming forward and doing that. It was a wonderfully well-thought-out and planned presentation. It is a springboard for what's to come. We can't do this without you. It would be impossible for us to say that we know what's going on and what's gone on. The stories give us room for growth. I actually have to, you know, think about some of the things you said and how to move forward, and I can't tell this group how valuable the information is as we move forward. So I really thank this group so much. They've done a wonderful job and really, I mean, shed such a wonderful light on Yorktown. So thank you so much for this, Yorktown for Racial Justice Group, for coming forward.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
Sure, absolutely. This was an incredible meeting for a variety of reasons, and I wrote down a bunch of things. The thing that stuck out to me the most, and I think it was Omna that used the word "super proud" or the term "super proud," and that's exactly how I feel about the alumni that we had on our panel tonight, just truly extraordinary young people. And Michelle used the term "profound," and this really does have a profound impact on our community, and I think it's critically important that we continue to address some of these things. For those of you who don't know, I'm going on 50 years as a Yorktown resident. I was not born here, but I moved here when I started kindergarten, and I graduated from Lakeland High School. So I've seen a lot, and I've heard a lot of the things that were talked about tonight. And so there's quite a lot to reflect on. Scarily, I made this comment to superintendent not too long ago that my own personal experience with US history ended at around 1965 also, and I graduated from Lakeland in 1985. So looks like we have a lot of things to look at as far as how we're teaching more current events, and I have utmost confidence, not only in the community, because it's a tremendous community, but also in our superintendent and our administrators and our Board of Education. We will make changes that are necessary. We will address these things. Shout out to you, Emma, for being the voice of JJ. I know that young man well. I'm a little scared that he's actually 16 years old at this point, but that's just me getting old. And thank you for being his voice, and please let him know that he has, he has plenty of advocates here, and if he ever needs someone else to talk to, that our administrators and even myself, more than happy to take it up and listen to his experiences, because there's a lot that needs to be done. And as I said, I think we're, we've got the right people in place to make things happen, and I support it 100%. So thank you very much for this. This was a wonderful, wonderful evening.
I just want to, I have, I, Yorktown students, past and present, never cease to amaze me. They are incredible, incredible students, speakers, human beings, and you guys all showed that tonight. And I think we're doing something right if you have the empathy to want to make the change and know that we, as a district, are committed to making changes. We're not ones that see an issue and just stop. If we know there's an issue, then we're going to try to fix it. And I believe strongly that Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea and Mr. Cole believe the same way, too, and we want to make the changes. We, our point tonight was to listen, to hear what you had to say, because if we don't know the stories, we can't start to build the changes. And it was deliberate to bring our task force to hear the stories as well, and I know that they're going to take it back and they're going to do something with it. I want to just thank everybody for sharing, because it's very difficult to share. People don't like to do it, and I understand why some of the presenters shared other people's stories, because people don't always have the strength to come forward, and we wish that they did, but we're glad that we hear their stories anyways. I want to thank you all for that. I'm so proud of Yorktown. I really am, and I'm proud of the fact that I know that we can do this hard work, and I know that we can make this a better place. Ron, Lisa, Tom, did you want to say anything?
I would like to. Dr. Hatter, is that okay if I go first?
Please, please.
So I'm not going to say much more than what's already been said, but to our members of the coalition who organized and came forward by sharing your personal stories and the stories of others in our community, and to our other community members who spoke during our public session, I do want you to know that you have given us so much to reflect on and so much to help guide our work moving forward. I'm looking forward to the opportunity of listening to this again, the recording of this again, when I'm not filled with emotions, one, being so incredibly proud of all of you, and two, being so saddened by your experiences. So I am looking forward to being able to listen again, to be much more aware in the moment, and to help guide our work with our committees at the various levels in our buildings and within the community as we go forward. So thank you to everyone who had a part in this evening and for helping drive this work. It's much appreciated.
I'll just end with saying thank you to our alumni. I think I've said enough today, and I think the attention turns to, obviously, continuing to listen, continuing to acknowledge what happened. There were a lot of positive things that we heard and a lot of things that we need to address, and look forward to the journey, because we're going to continue to listen, and then we need to take action. And that's a really important part of our next steps, my next, the next stage of this work, and you have my commitment.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Almut.
Back and forth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They oppose? Thank you all very much for attending tonight. We really appreciate seeing you all here. Good night, all.
Night.